To be done, it also is thanking the people that came from a long distance like Ray. And it also thanks all the our relatives from all around that are coming that are there. Jay, I see you're there and it's really good to see you, Jay. I just and all my Sam, excuse me if there's any other of my relations on on here. I can't see anybody but maybe 12 people. And so this song is her song and she gave it to we the Tleilua people to use. Because we don't sing any of our songs unless we have permission to use them. And they're for specific reasons, and this is to bless the doings as she would say that are going on. And that it would open our hearts and we'd receive what we need to receive. And that we need to share what we need to share and that the Creator protects us. And it keeps us healthy and strong. And so this is her song that came to her in a dream when she was a young teenage girl. Excuse me, girl. And just as a plug, if you haven't read Tleilua From My Heart, that's her book. It's it's actually her words of life here at Tleilua. It's a good book to read if you want to. It's just one of so many to understand who we are as Coast Salish people. It's a good glimpse into after the signing of the treaty. And so I will sing this for you and I honor my granny. And I today I brought my dad's drum and I haven't used it since he passed. It's been 11 years. Today he's here with us and he's and so he'll help me sing this. And I think this is wonderful that we're coming together because nothing, nothing impacts us more than as tribes than those other governments outside of us that have say, that have impact, that have decision on our lifeways. And many times without asking tribes how it impacts our lifeways, much less our treaty rights. And so counties are really critical. And I want to thank you because you're the first county to step up and say, we want to know more. And so I thank you for that. And that's our prayer. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Patty. Thank you so much. It's it's wonderful to see your dad's drum. It's been a long time. So I'm gonna do a little bit of housekeeping today. The the we really want to be able to have a wonderful roundtable dialogue with all of you, opening up your hearts and minds to San Juan County. And Patty's right, you are the first county to step up and say, we want to build a better relationship with our Coast Salish nations and tribes. We want to understand the work that we do and how it's intertwined within preserving the culture, the treaty rights, the inherent rights, the Aboriginal rights, and really generations of the past and generations of the future. The work that all of you do in the county, whether you work in the public works, whether you work for the organization that level works for, whether or not you are a community member within Northwest Straits Commission and you are a commissioner, you all have a role within the place that they've called home for since time immemorial. And today's conversation with Ray and Patty and Jay and Sam, we welcome your voice, really is engaging with all of you why your work is so valuable to the Coast Salish nations. You know, why the work that you're doing is so important to preserving their lifeways? Why the work that you're doing is going to help raise grandchildren's grandchildren, be able to harvest and fish and walk the shorelines? Why Patty's granddaughters are going to be able to harvest the cedar, to be able to come out to the shorelines, to the cultural places? Why Jay's grandson's, grandsons and granddaughter's granddaughter is going to be able to go to the places where his name was come from? Today, we want to be able to bring heart to the work that you all are doing and the place that you all call home. You are the caretakers of the Salish Sea. You are the ones who take care of the eagles, the ravens, the herring, the eel grass, the little clams, the woods, the cedar. You take care of the places where thousands of generations of Coast Salish have walked. And they you carry the places and take care of the name, the places where the names, where Ray and Patty and Jay come from. So it's as if you are sitting on the beach behind me in the place that I call home. I live in in on Sanish Island out on North Beach. If I look out this way, I have Lummy Waters out this way. If I look out this window, I have Mount Baker that's covered in snow here. Back on this side, I have Blanchard Mountain. Up to the mountains, I travel up into the Fraser River Territory, past Bellingham, up north to to Squamish, Musqueam Territory on the other side of that invisible border. Just a little bit about about me before I turn it over to Ray. I'm Flinket and Aleut. Like Flinket name is huge to see, it comes from my grandmother's background. It is that that place of change. It is the time of when we are having new beginnings. My Flinket name is intertwined within the instream flow up in the tributaries. It is the baby frogs that are growing up in that area. For me, this name has been passed down from grandmother to grandmother to grandmother, from grandmother, grandmother and grandmother to myself. When the instream flow dries out, when the ground in the tributaries dry out and these baby frogs no longer live, my name no longer carries forward. So for me, understanding and protecting the resources and the environment is the very essence of protecting who I am as a Flinket woman. I am intertwined within the Coast Salish people because I too am the shoreline. When the tide is out, the table is set. When the salmon swim is when my heart most flows. I am part Aleut on the other side of me, coming from the Privuloff Islands in southwest Alaska. I know Jay and Patty and Ray and some of you have heard me say this, but from my dad's side, I'm Seal People. So those of you who understand, when you intertwine Seal and you intertwine salmon, you get someone as unique as me. So I bring I bring cultures and I bring resources together. And so I am part Seal, part salmon. So when the tide is out, I'm really harvesting and having fun out there with all of my fellow resources. Who, when it goes, when the tide goes out, way out about two miles, and you'll see the clams start hopping, you'll see the seagulls out there harvesting every little bird you could imagine, I'll see otters. I see everything out here that comes to visit me, the herons, the eagles. They're my staff, they're my family. I spend a lot of time standing here alone in front of these computers zooming like many of you, but they never let me forget why I do the work that I do, not only for Coast Salish, but then also as a fellow shoreline inhabitant, but also as a shoreline cultural person of where my names and my lifeways come from. So with that, we're going to have a wonderful day today. I'm inviting you to sit on my beach with me. Imagine that you are sitting on a log with Jay and Ray and Patty and you're hearing all of the resources screaming and yelling and talking with us and joining us today. If I had a fire, I would light it for you outside, but I lit a candle, Ray. So I think I'm doing okay. If I had fish sandwiches, I would send it to you. If I had fish stew, we would be having that. But Frankie and Kendra, the only way I can host it is to have the meeting here on my beach with all of you. So with that, Ray, I'm going to have you open it up. And then Jay, I'd like you to turn it to you to open it up. And today we're just going to have a good conversation. If you have a question, I have my chat up again. Just rock your question in there and I'll call upon you and we can pause. But this is really a great time for us to gather together on the beach. So Ray, I'll turn it over to you.
See, dollar heights up, Patty, heights up. We see now much than a scholar one could see, it's a limited seal one, heights up. I want to say thank Patty for this on so much. Centers me, calms me down, it allows me to forget about the meeting I had yesterday and come to this one today. And I want to say thank you, Patty, for that wonderful song from your family. So I just want to say, heights up, thank you so much. We see a positive up. Now in the CCIs, you come together to talk about good, big things. So I'm happy to be here with you today to join you. And I'll participate a little more in a little while here, but only to say thank you to all of you for being here today. Heights up. We're going to Jay.
Heights up, Ray, Patty, great to see you always, 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 always. I see Angela, I've done some work with her. Angela, great to see you and everybody here. Deborah, thank you always for bringing us together. You do such a great job of bringing us together, bringing people together, bringing communities together. San Juan County, thank you. Thank you for this time. Thank you for having ear to hear and maybe see things from a little different perspective, our perspective and and the importance of our partnership with one another that in the past has been missing or viewed as a partnership. And maybe just a brief moment to gain some understanding of what a treaty is in terms of a partnership, a relationship. And I'm just thankful for the county for the last for myself in leadership. And now as a fisherman and as a community member, to witness the change and the transition to view it as a partnership and really like today, being at the table with one another, having open conversations and discussions and empathy for one another and especially for our future generations, our children's children. I'll just start, first of all, my traditional name, name's Watautlum. Son of Snat, E Slay Alkton, son of Snat. Watautlum comes from Orcas Island, my family out there, San Juan Island. The the first at contact would have been Mary Ann, then Josephine, then my great grandfather Felix Solomon, which came my grandma Nancy Solomon, who was married to Vernon Lane. And Slay Alkton is up in, Ray and I don't believe in boundaries. When we ceded our territory, our territory included Canada as well, what is known as Canada, we were one with Sanich, Songi, Suk, Semiamu, Lummy, Lactamish, Clactamish. And now it's times have changed in six generations. But just honored and proud to be here and thankful, Deborah. I'll let you start with a question or and then go from there. Thank you again to everyone. Heights up.
Thank you, Patty. And our thank you, Jay and Patty, just opening up the floor. You know, we really want to learn and share a little bit about, as Jay put it, you know, Coast Salish has intertwined their bloodlines from the Powell River down through Vancouver Island, down through the mainland of Vancouver, down through Lummi Nation, through the Seattle area, down through South Hood Canal, all the way out to the ocean side, down to out around Niabey and then down through Hokunam. So I have to tell you guys, and I'm going to go on a little bird walk here, Patty. When I first came down here, Ray and Jane Patty, I didn't know Niabey. I didn't know Hokunam, I didn't know Marysville, like I knew Seattle. Jay, I only knew by Indian names. I only knew Lummi, Squaxin, Quinol, Macaw. I didn't know what the American names were. So my daughter, who's now 16, is raised the same way I was by by Coast Salish. Like I didn't know, I know where Song East was, but I didn't know where Victoria was. I knew where Squimout was, but I didn't know where where Victoria was. I knew where Musqueam was, but I really didn't know what Vancouver was. My daughter at 16 is raised in the same way. I only knew where where the Coast Salish people lived when I came down here 20 years ago. So Patty, one of the conversations we're hoping to really talk about is Coast Salish stretches across the the entire Northwest here, from the White Cap of the Mountains to the White Cap of the Salish Sea. Are your your relationships are intertwined within bloodlines? Can you share us a little bit about that culture and history? And then, you know, the depth of your name, one of the name, one of the things in your notes, and this is something that I do when I'm I'm working on these type of opportunities. There are key words that you're going to hear today, bloodlines, names, from Y cap to Y cap. These are some things that I would drop down on the side of your notes. Understanding the rich history of the language, understanding the rich history, the culture and the values. So Patty, I'll open up to you and Ray, one thing that we talked about is we didn't understand how connected we are to the resources, where our names come from, where our spirits come from, the world of the Transformers. And then Jay, we we also talk about intertwining our relationships with the resources, generations of passing down a tradition from your from your father's father to you and the places we come from. So that's a lot to unpack, but I thought that kind of shapes out the framework of our conversation. Because for all of you sitting with us here today on the beach, you all played intricate role, as Patty put it, in building policies, building laws, giving permits, doing environmental studies, addressing letters on projects. You might have someone who puts a shovel in the ground and they find shell midden. What does that really mean? So these conversations are to help bring heart to the work that you're doing. So Patty, I'll turn it over to you to kind of begin that dialogue.
Well, you're you're right, Deb. I've been taught that our bloodlines, there obviously there was no border for Coast Salish people. We had a different world that was ruled not by county law or state law or even what we as tribes come to know today as treaty law. Our world was governed by protocols of where you lived, where you came from and who you were. Your Indian name said everything of who you were and where you come from. I have to apologize, I didn't introduce myself right. I am Skotok. I carry the ancestral name of my great, great, great grandmother, who had a longhouse at Woodby Island. And she also had a longhouse up in Snoqualmie. But it's the inner marriages that we had, that in inner relationships and interdependency upon each other regarding the resource that that brought us all together and shared resource. But they were never a time where you never just, I never went up to Lummi and just started fishing. There if I didn't have somebody I was married into, then I would probably, I would have to ask permission to come in. But back then, marriage wasn't based on love and affection. It was based on arranged marriages and what would be in the best interest of my family clan. And so and there were so many protocols that are are gone now that it was also based on what class you came from. And in English terms, don't even begin to define it or describe it, but high class, low class and slave descent. Right in our treaty, it says, and you will no longer have slaves. Because it was the it was the era of freeing slaves and that word was, you know, not right. Well, that's the English term. But it was how our societies were ran. And so you never really married outside of those protocols of those classes as the English term would define it. But we've changed so much since then. I was privileged to be raised by my grandmother my whole life, who died when she was 92. And she never taught me about my culture. She never talked about it. She never spoke our language except for when she was really upset. And then she would get upset with herself for speaking up because she went to the, she was one of the first generations into the boarding school at Tleilua. And so it had destroyed the spirit of who she was as a Coast Salish woman so much that her only goal was to be a good white woman, a good Catholic woman. And if she couldn't attain that, then she didn't feel worthy to be that. And the reason I'm telling you this is because so much of who we were was taken away during that era. We all know that. And so that's why today for myself personally, I fight, not fight, I stand up every day for Coast Salish. I try to educate people about Coast Salish, about me as a Tleilua. Because it's if you don't understand it, you can't begin to understand how we think and why we we choose to do what we do. I would have never chosen to live on a reservation. That was what we had to do. Because for me, as a Tleilua tribal member, I am Snohomish, Snoqualmie, Upper Skagit. And that's what we know of from the census, because everything was taken away because of that boarding school, some of that knowledge. And so from the tips of the clouds all the way down to the Salish Sea, to the bottom of the Salish Sea, that's who I am. And there were no boundaries of a county or there were no boundaries of a city or even a tribe. My territory, from what I was taught from my granny, Harriet Shelton Dover, who adopted me as a little girl, was that we we were, those were our territories where we lived and our boundaries were our resource and we followed that resource. And of course, we all know the biggest was our king salmon and our salmon. And I I think it's really important to know back to my grandma. So I've come to know as I've grown up and I've healed a little bit from some of the wounds of that multi-generational trauma from the boarding school. And it's not a matter of ever forgetting, but I know why I do what I do. It wasn't what my grandma said, it was how she lived her life. And even though she her attainment was to be a good Catholic and a a good non-native, she lived native her whole life. She spoke broken English, she didn't speak a perfect English, and her first language was Leshutee. And but it's how she lived her life in front of my eyes. She never lived anywhere else but in my house. That's very traditional. For me to during COVID, to be away from my grandchildren is almost like a sin. I have a a six month old granddaughter that I'm supposed to be whispering into her soul of who she is as Coast Salish. And we'll catch up, I'll whisper a lot when I can hold her. But I have 17 grandchildren and one great grandchild. And those grandchildren are my life and why I do what I do. But it's not just that, that's an indicator of Jay's children, Jay's grandchildren. When Jay fights for our way of life, when Ray fights for our way of life, he's fighting for my children's way of life, we do it all together. And it's been a long time coming that we can stand up off the backs of our ancestors, beautiful people like Vernon Lane, Jay's grandfather, who I knew very well, off my dad Bernie Goben, Billy Frank, and and even my grandpa Popeye Jones. And all going way back into our ancestors to the signing of the treaty that had the foresight to look down the road here today and the uniqueness of us in the Northwest with our treaty. When Governor Stevens and some of you've heard me say this, but it sticks and drives me every single day when he said, okay, we are you going to sign this treaty? Lummi was there, Tleilua was there, all the tribes were there. At Makotio and and an elder, one of the Snohomish chiefs back then, they called him chiefs. We didn't call them chiefs, we called them heads of our clan, our house, the grandpa. He said to Governor Stevens, along with everybody else, how are we going to feed our people? And he said it in our language, interpreted into Chinook language into English. And when he said that and everybody else said, this is, this is what we need to know, how are we going to feed our people? If you put me, a Stahob, a Snohomish, on the Tleilua preservation, that's 22,000 acres. And from White Cap to White Cap, that's where I fed my people. How do I feed my people? And then Governor Stevens began to negotiate and negotiated in that we could have access to our usual and accustomed grounds where we've always hunted, gathered, fished and for cultural and spiritual purposes, gone into our mountains, into the Salish Sea, all over. There was no, for us, no Oregon and Washington and Canada, all over those territories to do what we did to live our lives back then. And they had the foresight to see that Jay would be here. They they had the foresight even to know that Ray would be here because our treaty is our treaty. But my bloodlines are Ray's bloodlines and his probably flow through mine somewhere along the line since time immemorial. And so that is a strong, the strength of us as tribes today that our grandparents had the foresight to see that, a simple word of how will I feed my people? And and it wasn't just about the sustenance for the body, but it was the spiritual and cultural. At any rate, but Harriet Shelton Dover, Kialtsa, taught me about my culture through words and by living it, by example. And that was through seeing me as a 10 year old with no shoes on, probably just salt all over me because all I did was live on the the Tleilua Bay. And even in the winter, we swam in the winter, we didn't care. And I know you can relate to that, Deborah. And so my skin was dusty from salt. And she was regarded as a high ranking, upper class woman, her family. And and through that, I was always afraid of her. And my grandmother would tell me when I we went to, she called doings, meetings or dinners with my tribe, you be careful when you're around Harriet. Don't you shame me by acting naughty, by acting wild. You sit still and you sit beside me and be quiet. So I was always scared of her. She knocked on my dad's door when I was 10 years old and asked my grandma if she could have me on the weekends. And I thought, I was hiding under a table because I thought, maybe I'm going to get a spanking because I was naughty in front of Harriet Shelton Dover. And she asked my dad, my mom, my, not my mom or my dad, because in our culture, the grandparents own the grandchildren, not the parents. That isn't a sign of ownership, but it's a sign of responsibility, right, Ray? And that responsibility lied with my grandma and she lived that. She had full say in my life. And she asked Harriet, why do you want to take my granddaughter? And Harriet told her, because I see something in her. I see something that is there and she has ears to hear. And so from the time I was 10 till I was 19, I spent every single weekend of my life from Friday to Sunday with granny, Harriet, and then came home to my grandmother during the week so that I could learn about the history and touch and feel. You see behind me, all this stuff? That's that's Harriet Shelton Dover. If you were to come to my house, it looks like a museum. Because I just feel these things that want to come home. They don't want to be in a pawn shop or a or a museum or all those places. all those places where you can find baskets to buy that people have in antique stores. At any rate, and a lot of these are my own family baskets and, and carvings from my, my family themselves. And so that was Granny that taught me about what these things mean to us. And, and what they, the importance of them to our family today that make us whole still today. And so I've been blessed through that multi-generational trauma to carry some of that forward. And through Harriet Shelton Dover and my grandmother and my mom and dad and my aunties and uncles, everyone that has raised me up. I may not be the best at what I do. And I may not be perfect, but I certainly am passionate about helping people to understand. And I'm hoping this will lead more to me not talking, but you asking questions about what you really want to know. And trying to understand who we are. And I have spent my lifetime trying to understand who you are. Because that's who I was raised to be. And my goal in the San Juan Islands is to protect it. I'm on the San Juan National Monument Team and I'm very committed to that. Because I see the threats that are coming to the lifeways of the San Juan Islanders. Through the designation and the opening up of bring them all in, bring them all in. And you see that through COVID. We just on our MRC, I'm on the MRC Committee, although I don't participate hardly ever. But it's very critical that we work together to protect your lifeways and ours. And it wasn't until I got on the National Monument, and you may see a news article that comes out, there was an interview with me that said, I was scared to come and be a part of that. Because I was taught from the time I was little till I was quite a bit older because I fished for my dad in the San Juans. But it started with my grandparents from both sides. Don't get off the boat and go onto the island because the San Juan Islanders, and they said, the white people will kick you off. I was scared to death when I got appointed National Monument Team. And I have to be honest with you, it's been the greatest blessing of my life to let go of my fears and to conquer them and stand up to them and to realize, and Ray and, and all of our chiefs and our leadership that are in Coast Salish Gathering have taught me, at the end of the day, we all bleed red. Sixty percent of us is water. And it's not about the color of our skin, it's about our life and how we live our life and how we want to live it. And so I just can't stress enough, I think what we're wanting to, you're wanting to hear what we're wanting to express will come out throughout our talks today. And the questions you may have, I really like a more roundtable like Deb setting up so that what you need to know can come out. But I am Coast Salish and I am the proud granddaughter of Seelum Young. That's my grandma. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. And Patty, your, your traditional name, Squatellum, is
Squatalk.
Squatalk. It, it's, can you tell us the meaning behind that again?
My traditional name means something spiritual. That's what it means. Something spiritual, literally.
And that's what we are in, you know, understanding the historical trauma that has traveled throughout not only our First Nations to the north, but our, our tribes to the south. There are five hundred and seventy-one tribes across the nation, two hundred and seventy-seven in Alaska. Ray, I'm, there are hundreds also up in, up in Canada. All of our bloodlines are intertwined. The border between Alaska and Canada is invisible. The border all the way across the United States across the top is invisible, such as the indigenous down in Mexico. I think for Patty sharing her story, it really reminds us that our cultures are alive and well. Our cultures are alive and well. The names, the bloodlines, the language, there are three languages that make up Coast Salish territory. Hakuninum, Sinchatin, and Jay, Ray, what's my third language? Hakuninum, Sinchatin, Jay?
Great.
Thank you. And, and, and so therefore, and Leshutzi. And so where the cultures tie and their names tie the, the Coast Salish people together. Their names tie them together. Remember the names that you're hearing today. Jay will carry his name. He may have a few others that also carry his name throughout Coast Salish up north in First Nations, down to south. Ray's Indian name, he'll talk about his, a few carry his name. There are a few who carry my name where I'm from. So names are really, really important and valuable to us. So Colin, you're off mute, just in case you don't want us to hear your conversation. Colin?
You know what I'm doing out there?
Colin?
Is this your idea if I know what I'm doing out there?
Colin, you're, you're off mute. There you go. Yes, Patty?
Just, just to show you those bloodlines. They didn't just go north. They went over the mountains and everywhere. Also, my name comes from my mother's side of the family, who was from the Snoqualmy River. And the Skikomish River. She was Snohomish and Snoqualmy. And Squatalk. My, my traditional name comes from the longhouse at Whidby Island. Also, she, her great-grandmother was from Wenatchee. She was a Wenatchee Indian. And, and so it, it went everywhere. We, we were everywhere with following those resources and sharing those resources. And so. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, so transitioning into, you know, Ray, we've your bloodline and your, your name and your culture really are intertwined in, in who you are and where we come from. And I know you carry some of the work in the longhouses and you're when they call upon you in the different longhouses throughout Coast Salish Territory. You and I talked yesterday morning and you said, when they call upon you, you go. It's the work that needs to get done. There's also the conversation you taught me when I first came down, and I think this is valuable for all of you to understand of how our names are intertwined within the resources and the environment. You heard about how my name is tied in, but it's deeply intertwined into the world of Coast Salish and the longhouses. And, and the transformers that we are. So Ray, I, I wondered if we could talk a little bit about, about that today?
Yeah, it's a, it's a difficult subject to talk about, but Antequis Shalkwilam. To need to see us. You went in the sea last night, Laaxen. We take cause it to just chaminus. My traditional name is Shalkwilam. Originates from the Laaxen, Laaxen Island. On the map, it's probably, you probably see it as Valdez Island. I, from my mother's side. I I was identified for this name to wear this name and coached in my, to be the way I am today from from the earliest times I can remember and even before my memory. At the north end of, south end of Galeno or Valdez. What's in with the north end of Galeno, it's called Pull Your Pass on the map. Chakat is the name that we have. We were we were raised on a point of in Pull Your Pass. Ceremonies to introduce us to the sea, to the sea. We're done there. To be intimate with the sea. Protect, protect the sea as much as we can. Sometimes we keep things to ourselves because the governments and the churches use our practices. Make it so that they could dominate us, call us heathens and stuff like that. So we kept it to ourselves rather than than share with anybody. And even to this day, we're, we're we have a very secretive way of life in a cultural way. Where we're coming to share with our neighbors and the visitors of, in the Salish Sea is when we can use our traditional knowledge to help. And that's just recent. It's not long we've been able to say or people have been able to hear that we have great knowledge of the way things are and the way things were. It, it's just a few years. And even today, there's some resistance from policymakers and scientists and government people trying to not give value to the knowledge of our people. Though it's an uphill, up, uphill battle for us in that sense. But every once in a while, we get a message from Mother Nature to continue. You all remember the mother whale that carried her baby for seventeen some odd days. In the custom of our people. We were given the, one of the strongest messages in recent times. Things aren't right. Got to work a little harder. You got to ask people to help you. That, that changes a lot of minds in our approach. Guy like me, I've all, I spent lots of, lots of years fighting. Full force fighting, standing up for our people. And that with that message we got from that whale and the elders, how would, we, it was, she interpreted what the message was. Got to collaborate a little better. And take a little of that. The fighters are still there. But there are ti- times for us to look for collaboration a little better. So we can move the effort protecting the sea, so the sea are a little stronger. Little better. We didn't, we had no idea that cumulative issues would impact us. Just a little here, a little there, a little bit here, a little bit there. All of a sudden, there's a sign on the beach. You can't eat the clams. The oysters are no good. There's no more sea eggs. And that was impacts that we faced that snuck up on us, probably snuck up on lots of people. Most of the reason we faced that was those licenses and permits were granted not knowing we were there. Not knowing we still existed and relied on the seafoods. We relied on our traditional foods. We still gather. We still crave for our foods. This village I'm in, the English name is Shell Beach. We're clam diggers. We're the clam diggers. We have miles and miles of beaches that have wild clams on them. But anyway, I I kind of get fired up on this kind of discussions. Shell Beach is its traditional name is Snackmin. It describes dry spear and flounders. He, I don't know if you know flounders with that. It's kind of like it's got black stripes on it. Used to be so plentiful here. None exist anymore here. And our, our beaches. Our little bays here. So changes came. They just crept up on us. You know, all of a sudden, maybe it's thirty, thirty-five years since somebody used a spear on a to get a founder. And that guy that was getting it, the last guy that was getting it, he was the only one doing it for ten years because it just just started, disappeared, just, it changed. We've had to adjust for those kind of things. I'm really with this COVID thing that's happening to us. It's affected our seasons. We've, we've just finished our salmon season, our fishing season's pretty well over. The last of the chum salmon, dog salmon are hidden in rivers now. Some places, the last of them. Here, little creeks and rivers here. We have hundreds on the island here, little creeks that used to be full of chum dog salmon. Well, it's the tail end of it and the leaves are falling, of course. But right now, we should be in a duck hunting season. And it, they disappeared also. We, when we were kids, we were sneaking on the boats and canoes to go hunting ducks with their guys that were hunting and we could get two, three hundred ducks and feed a whole village. Now today, you're lucky to get four or five in a whole season. So we've seen immense changes in, even in just my short period of time. You know, sometimes we didn't pay attention to what time was doing to us. All of a sudden, you come to and holy chamoli, there's lots of things changed. So I'm going to say thank you to you if you're trying to protect your islands and your your way of life. We've been there. We've done that. I have cousins and relatives. Some of my bloodline comes from the other island, a little closer to you guys on Salt Spring. Have a very, very big, strong connection. In the formation of, when the government came along making reservations, reserves. There was no roads here yet. The islands were the played a very big role in in the movement of the surveyors and census takers. They had to go from island to island and make a little ways, some bays here and there. I'm just saying this because one of the things the government did here in Canada was to set aside all the little islets and made them crown land. The islets are federally crowned. for the most part. Of course, we're uh we've been working our way through uh making a government to government relationship with Canada, solidifying that and Sheminas, my nation is uh we're sitting on unceded terr- territory of the Sheminas people. North of us is Shnaimuk and there have a Douglas Treaty. South of us, Malahat has a Douglas Treaty where we have treaty tribes on each side of us, but we, we have, we're um we're non-treaty, but we're in the discussions now for to set up a modern agreement of some kind. Treaties or other constructive arrangements we can make with the with the si- uh federal and provincial system. Of course, takes a lot, doesn't just happen. We've, we've helped the provincial government sign a Dripa so UN Declaration has been adopted by the province of British Columbia. And last week, the federal system introduced legislation to it to have a UN Declaration fully adopted in law for Canada where we're we're gonna have a lot of work to do there. It's uh scheduled for three years to get implemented. We think that's too long, but that's uh, that's such as the the legislation that goes, goes through. It's, it's not the first time it's been introduced in Canada. It was introduced in the Private Members Bill, which didn't really have a Private Members Bill don't have much of a chance, but this time it's a government sitting government introduced the bill, so we think it has a has a good chance. So I went from to, from, from this state of affairs today, when legislation has been introduced and treaties are being discussed some of our cultural ways. We have a one of the wonderful things we have is we call it the sea wolf. It's a transformation between the killer whale and the sea and the wolf. It's in a, it's a, it's, it's in a picture of petroglyph. And I'd ask you not to talk about it because people look for petroglyphs and there's worldwide petroglyph committees or groups that go around the world looking at these things. Wondering what they are and a lot of them get dis- defamed or defaced, whatever you call it. But I'm saying this because it's it's a transformation that happens. It's a guardian that the Sheminas people have, our strong medicine people in the past gave us a guardian to look after us, to watch out for hard times, watch out for any anything that would bother us. That we're uh relying on a lot of these wonderful things that they're are uh leaders of the past have given to us to use. I asked my uncle about it and you know, you're kind of skeptical about these kind of things. You know, you don't believe it, you know, it's a or you don't think about it. And he said, there's a lot of people that believe in the Bible. We have a different beliefs. Just accept it that way. Don't challenge the Bible. Just think about your, what you've been given by your people. So I want to say thank you. The one concern in terms of our a big concern, maybe not one, but the big concern we have with the you know, there's island groups here on the uh and then it's B C waters too and some of them wanna
openings before the twenty-first.
Okay, so what does that mean?
I have to find another.
Tony, you, you have your mute on, or you need to turn your mute on.
So anyway, some of them would like to um thank you, Tony. You let me think a little bit. But uh some of the island groups up here are trying to develop another form of governance like municipality. And we're not gonna we're having great problems with that. So just to let you know, that's a bother that's in, in front of us and and um sometimes they come in a form of uh what, what do you call those? Anyway, they're um environmental, great big environmental, like the Great Bear Rainforest thing and different places uh
Sanctuaries?
Sanctuaries, yeah. And they really look nice. They look beautiful and uh they think we, you know, we, it's easy to convince people of what they're doing, but governance is an important part for us, very important part. So anyway, I love this discussion and I, thanks for listening to me and maybe I can answer some questions later on.
Thank you. I'm, I'm tracking the questions on the side and, and jotting them down. So thank you, Byron and Judy, for a few of them. We'll come back to them. I think one of the things you watched, Ray, he took us from the culture values and the laws of Coast Salish people, which guides them in, in their, in their um their traditions and their names and in their songs. And then intertwined it within the governmental structure of um the, where we are with uh Canada at the federal level and then how to build um local government and their roles and relationships. Um, we know that in Canada, uh we have the Douglas Treaties, but they are very much um um in a different place than uh our Washington tribes and our treaty tribes. Their Aboriginal rights uh based on law is similar to our treaty rights. But again, they're at two different federal levels. And then listening to Ray bring us back to the cultural laws that guide the natural ways of making decisions um such as the sea wolf of understanding the, the nuances of bringing those two resources together, the wolf and the killer whale. Um, understanding the cultural laws of what guides Ray. Ray walks of two worlds, as does Patty and Jay. Uh, he walks in his traditional world of making those decisions that are being made. And then as also a elected official, he works through the various different levels of um governance structures at the federal, uh state, uh provincial, even the state. Uh, he stood on the floor of the People's House and the House of Representatives that the governor did a little bit of work. Um, but then also working with uh local government and municipalities. So Ray is a transformer. He floats from like Patty and Jay at the local level through the uh our provincial, state level, through the federal level to the international, going all the way to the UN Declaration, uh the UN uh sitting on the floor testifying there and then all the way back. And this is the work and the value of why Patty and Ray and Jay are so important for you to hear. I know it can be difficult to follow at times, but if you can string, like if you can take that thread and string it together as if you're hanging a net or getting your crab pots ready, Jay, or um getting ready to go sailing or getting ready to go um to go out with your family. If you just take that thread and tie it together, you can see how uh complicated uh walking in two worlds can be. Uh, Jay's been a fisherman his whole entire life. You know, his, the stories he tells us of the places he's gone with his fathers, with his uncles, uh with the, with Lummi Nation elders um have really built him into the, the leader that he is today. Jay, we talked about, um, you know, the value of how you intertwine your governmental relationships, how you intertwine your life way of being connected to the resources as a fisherman, um how important uh um having a a uh a net and a crab pot in one hand and a resource in the other and how that really sustains the social structure of us. Um, if you could touch a little bit on that, but then also maybe touch a little bit on, on your relationship and your cultural connections to the resources, that'd be really helpful.
Sure, thank you. Patty and Ray, thank you for sharing your words. I uh just echo those and, and first um uh with Ray and, and his family and his community, um thank you for your uh um answering the call always. And uh, you know, for me, it's important to note that in eighteen fifty-two, we were there for the Douglas Treaty and we signed it as well. And Chowatu was very um uh aware of, of the treaty process come eighteen fifty-five in Point Elliott and uh um, you know, and, and like Ray says, and like we all say, is, is there were no borders then. And uh um, so yeah, w- we participated in a couple of different treaties um because we were uh, you know, in the middle of battles between um uh immigrant sovereigns who came into our territory just six generations ago. And for us, um and I think you San Juan County as partners, as friends and, and as uh uh important um relationships to carry on and understand the past that we're not enemies. Um, there's a long history, uh way before the treaty, um Lummi, like Patty said, um marriages weren't based on uh what we see them as today. Um, our culture is much different and always has been. And uh there was an importance and a value in, in uh establishing those relationships with these new immigrants that came to San Juan Island and Orcas Island. And one of the first marriages during Hudson Bay was a Lummi slash Sanich uh with the Hudson Bay and, and has led to a lot of six generation San Juan Island um residents. And uh you know, that history is important and, and you know, the first resolution we pass every year since the court case in nineteen seventy-two. Um, we've never accepted the money for the wrongful payment and failure to pay for our ceded territory, including the islands. And uh we still today reject that money, which is worth um millions of dollars, but it's not about money. It's about wrongful doing, but I think as partners, we need to understand this history and the reality of still today and why we fight so hard to protect places like Madrona Point, where our families um traveled by canoe at the turn of the century in nineteen hundred. My great grandmother, Dora, who is probably related to Patty um because we come from different corners in our family, but was, but married um my great grandfather Felix Solomon, who comes from Orcas Island. And you see uh, you see um uh Glenwood Springs and you might see a beautiful hatchery, but to me, that's where my name comes from. My name comes from that village. And Angela, you're aware of that uh because we got to spend some time together, but Squaloxton, Watotlam and Ray coming from the Smokehouse probably knows what a war club is and, and where that comes from is right there at that lake. Um, uh, you know, a long time ago, but the stories still carry on and the importance of those stories and that history and those names tied to it. Um, in the widow mother of, of those two children and the names we carry, but that history isn't very long ago. Um, six, seven generations, when you put it into perspective and put it into decade timelines. I, I've been here twenty-five percent uh of the existence of this new world and I'm only forty-five years old. So as you can imagine, Patty talking about her grandmother, me talking about my great grandmother when she died at the age of ninety-two, I believe as well, in nineteen eighty, born in the eighteen hundreds. She died when I was five years old, but I had the I was fortunate to be brought up by her as well, who's very rarely spoke English, but spoke the language and very stern as well. But things like that are important, I think, as, as partners to um u- understand and, and be aware of as, as we come in to protect our resources, protect these things because in eighteen fifty-five, when my families, uh you know, we had thirteen signatories um and, and the majority of them reef net owners. Okay, what are reef nets and where were they and why were they important to Lummi? And, and what did that mean? Um, but I think I have to go back in time because we still live it today when we fight to protect, when Ray talks about the mother pushing the, the baby orca, it's more than a sad day. It's, it's much more than just sadness. It's going back to eighteen fifty-five when we not entered, not went to war and lost, but entered into a treaty, the true sovereign entered into an agreement with the immigrant sovereign, the United States and ceded territory and came together as partners, knowing that but there was an established relationship before. The northerners who considered us enemies and that the wars that we fought all the time bring, be in frontline and in, in uh, in wars, you know, San Juan Islands were the front line for my family. And Angela, you're aware of some of these stories that we don't really share a lot about, but one of them in eighteen fifty-eight, one of the last but a lot of those northerners had guns before we did and we had the traditional bows and, and, and arrows, but those wars were still going on, even as Hudson Bay. So those intermarriages were important for alliances because this immigrant had guns and, and we didn't. And uh um but some of the things like Orcas Island, uh Haida Point, the last documented one of the last documented wars in eighteen fifty-eight, three years after the treaty, one of our villages just got annihilated there. Um, so protecting these places that uh where, where we've lost loved ones or Madrona Point, or some of you may have heard of Pearl Little in, in the work that, you know, she was a Lummi who worked with closely with Sharon Kinley in the eighties and nineties to protect places like Spirit Cove. Um, those are all traditional duties, cultural duties, traditional laws um that are, are um, you know, it's not about mitigation, it's about protection, but I think in eighteen fifty-five and even today, the challenges we face and Ray and, and some Patty and Deborah and, and some of us still have a tough time putting this into the English language. But one of the things that we discover is um and you'll discover or have discovered is, is the indigenous people have never separated themselves or allowed a divorce to take place from nature. We're still one, but when you look at past policies that got the mother pushing her dead baby and, and inability to have children successfully all the time and, and death at birth is becoming common, the extinction of salmon so near to us. The rivers polluted, the Salish Sea polluted, mooring buoys taking up twenty-three, twenty-four percent of the ability to, for tribes to harvest that are protected under the treaty. This, this absence of connection in being one with nature has never, the, the separation never took place with us. We never ever adopted that. And at some point um in, in, in other cultures, that separation took place, a supremacy, uh, uh, a domination, um for lack of better words, uh um a willingness to allow to extinct, to drive to extinction, to uh kill off all at the expense of. Uh, we've witnessed those policies in the past and I hope from this conversation, if nothing else, that we can view ourselves as partners going forward and, and really become aware of um you know, not just our philosophies, not just indigenous philosophies that we still hold um strong and believe in that inevitably what happens to the orcas and the salmon and the clams and in, in these places that are alive, that have spirits in our culture, we believe that they're alive um happens to us. I hope that moving forward for our children's sake and for future generations' sake, that um we can view ourselves as partners and not as, as enemies and come to the table together like we are doing today. I'm, I'm very grateful for this. And uh um I, I think that, that partnership going into the future is so, so important because as we shape future policy, as we hold Deborah as a representative and, and other representatives in leadership in Olympia and San Juan County and different places, Wacom County um accountable to do these things, we have to acknowledge um what this divorce from nature has caused. Because we're kind of, we're so busy, we're stuck, but during this pandemic, I think there's great opportunity to really reflect. Because we're kind of, we're so busy, we're stuck. But during this pandemic, I think there's great opportunity to really reflect on where we're at and and the importance and the important things in life and and for the future and and shape those policies and take bold action in San Juan County. Man, I mean, some of the strongest and and you know, I I I believe a lot's gonna come from San Juan County and I a lot has and and very bold and and willing to step up for future generations and for now, but not only for now, but the future to to create change and acknowledge that past, but always, always trying to create empathy and not offend anyone. That's never my intention to offend, but bring awareness and create empathy, not just for us, not just for the history and our families who come from that place. And some of us are probably related if there's six-generation San Juan County individuals on this call, very likely. And and that goes for Wacom County and Point Roberts and 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 Ferndale and Bellingham. So many are are related but can't carry those blue cards like their grandparents did fifty years ago or forty years ago. After Bolt, they had to be eliminated and this disconnect took place. But you know, as as far as the environment, Deb, I don't know if I touched on that enough, but but it's all connected and and it it's, we are one. And and I think we we it's important for all of us to to a- as leaders, as community leaders, family leaders, parents, grandparents to really take a look and and just for our own sake and for future generations, take a look at what that one word, nature, has done. You know, my son and I, I I shared this a a month ago on a on his large Zoom call. I think Governor Inslee was on it, but we're we're having this conversation around, you know, who the heck invented the word nature anyway? And because we have to believe when the English word nature came to be a norm, it created a separation. And it's not something we've adopted. And that creates a challenge in in and there's a perception towards indigenous communities who fight to protect and and kind of a lack of understanding, they're just job killers. Oh, they just want to stop every project from going through, but that's not the case. We are pro-development, we are pro-economics, but no more at the expense of salmon, no more at the expense of what is perceived as nature, because we still believe, we always will believe. And and I'm gonna share a quick story of my grandma. She, my grandma Nancy Solomon Lane was was very stern. You know, the boarding school era, the Catholic, you know, the government used the Catholic organization to civilize us and remove our language and 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 but growing up with her, I knew she loved me. But making sure that the old ways and the history and the tradition and who we were was most important and to learn that and know the value of that. In one example, walking on the beach with her, I must have been, I don't know, six or seven years old and Auntie Delia was there with us. And we're walking on the beach like we often do. We weren't allowed to be in the house watching a TV. I don't think at at that age, we had a TV. But we're walking on the beach and I I love sports. I love balls. I love basketball and football and baseball. I'm down there on the beach with them and and I throw a rock and and the rock hit and hit other rocks on the beach and it split and it made a vibrating sound. And she grabbed my shoulder and she said, shame on you, shame on you. You leave my rocks alone. Don't you know they're alive? Did you hear it cry when you busted it? Everything has a spirit. While I, at the, at that age, I thought, man, she is the meanest old lady. Gosh, she's always yelling at me, but I get it now. I get it. And and she had her own way of teaching and teaching the importance of things have spirits, things are alive. Even when we think rocks are dumb and do nothing, they're much older in the than us. They carry the footprints. Angela, when I first met you, I didn't join the circle. I took my socks and shoes off and I walked on that beach where my family walked. We see Shellmidden, but me, I I I put my footprints where my family's footprints were. And and you guys call that place home. I did a TED Talk out on Orcas in twenty fourteen, and when I arrived at the dock, one of the gentlemen who welcomed me said, welcome to my island, welcome to our island. And I laughed in his face and and I said, no, no, welcome home. You're you're on our island. You're on, you're on, you know, that, you're you're on an island called Swalox. Not Squaloxt, the brother to my name, but Swalox is the name of Orcas. This was my island for thousands of years. This is our island, our shared islands that we share with you now as partners through a treaty, through a partnership. And I think moving forward, again, I'm just thankful. I don't want to take up too much time and make sure we leave time for questions, but I really appreciate and value San Juan County all the time, e- every time I get the opportunity to share stories, share some history, but work together on good policy for our for our future generations and and also for today. Paishka again to Patty and Ray and and Deborah and and all of you on this call. Thank you.
That that reminds me, Jay, I I actually said my home out here, I I have to correct myself. This is your crisis home. I'm walking on your home and putting my bare feet on your beaches. Thank you for that gentle reminder, Jay. I had to smile and I'll remember that when I say that again to my visitors who joined me on Zoom. Um, you know, there are some questions that came through and I really want to be able to raise them. But before I go there, I want to share a little story. It was Ray, Emma is seven, going to be seventeen years old, and that was the first time I met you guys out on Victoria Island. I was carrying this little baby girl and this little baby girl, she was a chubby girl. I'm chubby. She was chubby. I was lugging her in at a she was about six months old. It was the first time Ray and I met together. And we developed the Coast Salish Gathering from there, which brought together the sixty-six Western Washington Treaty Tribes, Non-Treaty Tribes, and the First Nation Treaty Tribes. We came together in Sklalem, Jay, down down there at Squibb is what what the white name of it. And there's an elder coming up from Earl Claxton, remember him, Ray? And Earl Claxton told us the story of the Thirteen Moons. Thirteen Moons really lays out how the Coast Salish people, their timeline and their life, it's not January, February, March, April, May. It's a thirteen moons, which is guided by the shifting of the resources and the environment. And Earl Claxton shared a story that Ray talked about earlier, the indicators Joe Gatos, that we talk about and learn from science, the indicators of when the resources shift and move really tells you, when I put the story up there, when Mother Earth took a breath, and Jay, that's your quote, you taught me that when we talked about the COVID and watching Mother Earth take a breath and the resources around it. Earl Claxton talked about, as Ray put it, the shifting and changes of the resources as we're losing them so fast that we can barely see them move. But Jay, well, we'll talk about extinction later in Coast Salish. But Earl Claxton talked about being a young boy walking when the tide goes out and he's pushing the skiff out. All the bullheads would move around and that would be an indicator of a healthy, clean environment. I I love science and science loves Deborah, Joe, I remember that. And 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 Earl Claxton talked about the bullheads. And then he talked about as an older gentleman walking those same waters, Ray, and he said the bullheads were gone because the environment was changing because of the toxics and the pollution that's happening out there. What I talked about the icebreaker today, it tied together the conversation we heard from Jay, Ray and Patty. We're seeing a shift and change in the resources based on the increase of pollution, and we live in a pollution-based economy. The San Juan Islands is the very heart of the Salish Sea. The indicators that we see out there and we witness every day is part of what your role is as as people who call that place home now, as citizen science, right, Tom, of Northwest Indian Fish Commission, Northwest Straits Commission, and also Frankie, as just the citizen science and Kai that all of you see as you see these changes, you are all are all part of the Salish Sea. The changes in the environment, the resources is important. It's important. It's important to notice when the eel grass are leaving. The lady who lives in the house that that I live in has lived here ninety-eight years. She has seen all of the eel grass in the front change and the habitat change, and she has a diary of it. It's a book that she's written that says how everything has witnessed and changed. The herons, she said about fifty herons were here. And when I was showing her pictures, she had never seen so many herons out here this year when when Mother Earth took a breath. So intertwining the value of your citizenship and your science with the Western way of thinking, with the traditional way of Coast Salish people thinking, they have Coast Salish indicators that their names will leave and pass on when the resources are gone. When Jay says the rocks are alive, the rocks are alive. That is within the spirits that that carry, they carry. When I said my Indian name, Hicci, when it's gone, when those baby frogs are gone, my name is gone. All of you have an important role to carry, and we hope that you'll understand that when we fight for the resources, we fight for the environment, it's not just because we love it, it's because if we if we don't fight for it, we won't survive as the people we are, as indigenous people, and especially for the Coast Salish people whose place you all are walking on every day where their ancestors walked. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna shift there. If you have time, take a stretch. We've been sitting for a long time. We've got an hour to spend some time with all of you on my beach or on Jay's beach and Patty's beach and Ray's beach. There's a question that Judy brought forth. You know, she asked, you know, where, where, where do I find the original Coast Salish names of these places that Patty and Jay and Ray are talking about? And we talked about names, really very important. And and Patty and Ray and and Jay, if one of you guys would like to jump in, because as I understood it, and I was taught by all of you, you all have different names for different places because the San Juans was a place where people traveled. So Lummi might have a name for a place. First Nation up in your territory, Ray, you might have a name for the same place that Jay's been. Patty, you might have a name from Tulela. Swedamish might have a name. Samish, Sam, you might have names for different places. Do one of you care to speak to the the shifting of names that there is potentially no original name, Jay?
Sure. Well, for example, Lummi Island, when the the Hudson Bay came through, if you read like Fort Langley Journal, they called it Fish Island, I believe. We 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 call it Smemi Och. San Juan is Orcas Island, like I said, is Swalox, not Squaloxt, not the brother to my name, but Swaloxt. Those of you on near Spaden, San Juan, Orcas, you know, that little island called Flat Top. Well, that's where we would harvest octopus. So the the name of that island is Scamochten. And that's where that that's Scamoch is is octopus. Scamoch. And so, yeah, the names. You know, I I I am not worthy or or of, I can't give names. It's a, you know, if the county wants names of things, it's got to go through the cultural department. They're very tight on on as far as giving every single name out. I I'll leave it there. I I looked over some of the questions, Deb, and I do have some of the answers, but I'll I'll leave that. I'll I'll pause there.
Okay. And I think that's really important, right, Jay? And right, right, Ray? Like, the people from Vancouver Island travel through those islands and they might have names too, where they harvested and their names like same thing with Patty, the the different tribes, my First Nations might have different names, but this is the names that's important from where Jay comes from. And Jay, if you've gotten to harvest octopus, I have really good recipe on how to make them real soft so they're so so they're not chewy. It's one of my favorite. And smoked jarred octopus like this. We'll trade recipes, my friend. Patty? You're you're on mute, my friend.
I just wanted to add just a little note. You're right. Our language. I've learned through my lifetime that I don't speak my language, but my grandchildren do. There are language teachers and but I know my language is here inside of me. And so I know words, and I've told you guys before, I know cuss words and food and places and blah, 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 blah. But what I've come to understand in my spirit is that our language, even though I don't speak it, I live it in everything that I do. Everything that I do is my language, because the difference between English language, and that's how we've been taught to think. But we're here talking about Coast Salish today, but we as Coast Salish, our language is verb-based. The English language is noun-based. The noun-based doesn't even make sense to my spirit. It doesn't make sense. Person, place, or thing, and that's it. And then there's all these other things, how makes it function and action together. But in our language, our language is verb-based. Everything interacts and everything plays with each other and everything is connected. And so that's how I process and think things. And I didn't even realize that until I'm older now. And I can sit back and look at my whole life and I thought, wow, what an awakening for me to realize I've been living that language, even though I have not spoke, I don't speak it fluently. And so and the only best way I can describe it is if my grandma wanted something from the resort that was down at Tulela, she wouldn't say go to the resort. She would say, go to that place where they sell bread and where they, where they you go by the cattle guard right there and you know, and and then you go walk a little further past Quay's Dock where all our fishermen park. It was a whole story on the way to there. And then get me a loaf of bread. Or she would say, and I and we, I still to this day, if my husband says, let's go northwest or it says we're going southeast, I think, what, what, what? I can't, even though I know what it is, I can't get it. If he were to say it like my grandma said it, she would say in English terms, um, go down there where that dog always has barked and it never stops barking, even if it's dead, it's still barking. Turn to this way and go down there where the canvas bulbs grow. I knew what to do. But our language is not noun-based, and the way we live our base is not noun-based or it's 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 through a verb-based mentality. And I learned that from Chief Dalton Silver, speaking with him from Stolo Nation, and I said, oh, what does Stolo mean? He goes, river. And all of a sudden, the light bulb went off. I heard my grandma saying, be careful when you go to Stolak. Stolak is river in Leshutseed, my language, Stolak. And so I went home and it was just like some, like a little kid that learned something new, mom, 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 mom. And I went to my language department, which included my granddaughters. I said, tell me about Stolak. And they said, well, that means river. And then this old elder says, do you know what Stolak Quaid means? And I said, no. She said, it's the river within, it's those veins within your body where the blood flows. It's the same as river. Stolak and Stolak Quaid are the same. They're one in the same and they're not separate. We need each other and we function the same as human beings and as the river, we're both the same. And so that's something to think about when we're trying to express what we're we're about these things and what they mean to us. We see it through that verb-based mentality, not the way the English language. And that's, now I can understand why my grandma would say, oh, I can say it in English, but it's it's inadequate. She'd always say inadequate. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. And Ray?
Yes, thank you. I reminds me of the twenty-two years of research we've done here. I'm saying twenty-two years because we're in a modern day. I'm saying twenty two years because we're in the modern day treaty discussions, and we started it twenty two years ago. And one of the first issues on our agenda was name places. Name places. And uh we heard it from our elders at uh it it wasn't um from lack of effort that a lot of our name places weren't used. Like, for instance, Chemenis is comes from Chemenis. That's us. Uh somebody couldn't really write down Chemenis, so they changed it to Chemenis. Uh neighbors to the north of us, Shnaneimoch, changed it to Nanaemo. Um we've lots of the nations of tribes have changed their back to their traditional names. But some of it was not as um honorable as could be, I guess you might say. One of our little towns here is uh named after a as a sister city in South Africa. And they prided themselves to have that name, and it it was in that in the heat of the coal mine and logging industry was uh I don't know, I guess we say redneck as ever. But it was beyond the redneck as ever because of their uh connection to trying to rename themselves to something and in a place like Australia um at that time. So there's there's some names are have that that kind of relationship to oppression. Um sometimes we the names that are imposed or have been imposed are from the um people that came on sailing ships, you know. We don't even know who they are. Gulf of Georgia, that's uh that that funny thing in that Gulf of Georgia is uh was the um one of the keys to for us to push to have the renaming of the Sailor Sea. Um when the colonists or whatever they came named the the Gulf of Georgia after a member of the court in England. Somebody did some research for us and actually, my brother was a key on this renaming, but we found out that the the Gulf of Georgia was named after one of the members of the court in England. And that that member was not a really upstanding, fine citizen of even England. But they just desperately wanted to um I guess, I don't know, impose the name on us. And we um we actually um got quite a bit of resistance from the monarchists from from changing that name. But the um but that's a quick description of some of the names. But in the twenty two years of our documentation, our research, we have named places for for majority of the points and bays and mountains, creeks and rivers, estuaries, islands, islets. We have um we have all we have great documentation and that effect to and I'm really happy that we were able to save it and it helped our young people connect because the research with the research, the able to name something. And it gives them connection. They name something and it and all of a sudden, they understand it. To need that's in Kunnanahimut. My name comes from someplace. And we found those names, and that's actually the naming, our traditional names did a lot to help with the research because the the traditional names and where they come from was is very strong, and it's it it's never forgotten who you are, where you came from, where your lineage is. So it it um it allowed us to I don't know, cut the cut to the chase right away with the names and the places, and it connected who you are to that place, who your family is to that place. So there's more little more to it, but that's pretty well uh pretty well a quick description. Thank you.
And I wanted to um I wanted to ask Sam, you know, Sam, you've you've been an intricate part of the community and being Samish and Coast Salish. Sam, do you do you want to share a few words on the naming and um Christina Coons, I I know you're looking for maps of the Coast Salish names, and hopefully these answers. Oh, that's beautiful, Sam. Um hopefully, these answers will help um share with you um an answer. Sam, it looks like you're outside.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. It's quite Sambar, it's on a snack, Veric, it's on a Nahimut snack, Chuck Samish, some class lesson, a tier kayats, that's a Kunkongela, squasat. Hmm that's a song, knish, squasat, tia. Um so, good morning, everybody. My name is Sam. Um my family name is Veric. Um I come from Samish, and I'm here on Guimas Island, Kunkongela. I'm looking across the Cypress Island, Sayon. And um I'm language is one of my one of my passions. I've had some really amazing teachers that have guided me on my language journey, and um I'm Samish. I work for the Stillawamish tribe, so I'm also learning um Leshutseed along with learning the Northern Straits, the Kunganim. And um you know, learning multiple languages is really um it's really illuminating as to how you know, the same thing that all the speakers that have been talking about this morning that I'm so grateful for for all the things that all of my elders have been sharing this morning. But it reminds me of something that one of my teachers, Rosie Caillou, says is that you know, all the Coast Salish tribes were all the same but different. Like, a a lot of our teachings are very much rooted in the same thing, but there might be slightly different nuances to each one. Even each family within a tribe might have certain nuances that they follow slightly differently, same but different from other tribes or other families than. Um the languages are like that a lot as well. Um just like Patty was saying, the word for river. And the Northern Straits dialect, it's Stalo is the word for river. Um and then the shoot seed, it's Stula. Um so it's the same the same root there. Um so it sounds a little bit different, but it's really like the exact same word. One way to think about it is how French and Spanish are related. Um they they're both Latin languages, so they're both descended from ancient Latin. And the Salish languages are the same way. We all have a common what they call proto-Salish and linguistic terms, um but we have an ancient tongue that we all descend from. And so a lot of the roots are very similar, like the word for river, Stalo and Sula. Um another word that we all share um that we all recognize is the same as the word for cedar, bai. Um every Coast Salish tribe calls it bai. And um the word for salmon is also really similar, but it sounds different. Northern Straits, it's Janoh. The shoot seed is Zulod, but that that Anna and Ulad is actually the same the same root, and it means season or year. Um so you know, when we talk about place names, it's kind of the same thing, like a lot of the place names are going to be really similar, but they might sound a little different, or different tribes might call them a slightly different thing. Names are usually related to um you know, a really uh visible feature that would, you know, you'd be able to see from the water from a canoe if you were navigating to it. Or maybe a place would be named after a certain um food or a certain plant that people would be gathering there. Um like was talked about the the octopus island or octopus bay. Um you know, when we talk about sharing names for places, it can be a little bit tricky, you know, it's um kind of like Jay was saying, you know, sometimes you need to consult um the rest of the people within the tribe and the higher ups before sharing them. You know, I don't want to overshare either, you know, especially like past this this group, you know, I don't want to get ahead of anybody in sharing. Um but Samish has some names that that Samish holds, and we have some maps, and you know, we could we could talk about sharing that in the future, you know, maybe people in this group will continue talking, and we'll just see where that goes. But um you know, kind of my personal thoughts about it and kind of some thoughts in the Samish Language Committee says that you know, it's really silly that um a lot of the names we call these islands are Spanish names. And um you know, there's a lot of Mexican immigrants in this area too, and a lot of the kids in the schools are learning Spanish as a second language, and um I've always thought that was you know, a little bit backwards. You know, I would rather hear anybody and everybody speaking the language that comes from this place. I'd rather that more people know the true names of these places than the Spanish names. Um so I think that's something we could we could talk about more. I don't want to share past this group. So I think it's really important to, you know, really be inclusive and respectful of of all the tribes. It's a um you know, another great example of that is that there were a lot of tribes in the Samuan Islands, and a lot of history of collaboration out there and um I think that as you know, public agencies and stuff, um it's really important to be inclusive of of all the tribes and you know, not just one tribe. And a lot of times um we would prefer if you kind of let us do the collaborations between ourselves, that there's disagreements between the tribes. You know, it's your responsibility to be inclusive of the tribes, but stay out of the tribes' internal discussions and stuff like that. But um yeah, place names is something I'm passionate about, and I for one would love for the true place names to be shared. Um um it kind of goes along with one of the questions I'll just touch on real quick that I saw. At uh
Did we lose?
Snohomish County. Um, excuse me?
No, go ahead. We lost you for a minute, Sam. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. Um I'm a tipper for um Stillawamish tribe, and Snohomish County just hired an archaeologist to be on staff. And I think that if the Samuans were to do something to protect special cultural sites, it would be to have an actual on staff archaeologist in the county department to really watch over, because there's um there's sacred sites that are being destroyed every day out there with how much development's happening, and that's something you could do to have someone on the ground um reviewing projects all the time. Because there's names out there, and there's sacred spots out there, and yeah, so so thank you for uh your attention, and really want to thank all my tribal elders that have been speaking. It's been amazing to hear your voices this morning. Hi, Shka McQuat.
Sam, it's it's good to hear your voice. I I hadn't yes, Ray.
I I just wanted to correct myself. I I said uh one of the towns is clo- close to us is named after a town, and I think I said it right the first time, but I said Australia the second time. It was actually a town from South Africa. And all that came with it in those days, so that's how names affect us. So thank you. I just wanted to correct that. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Ray. Sam, it's good to see you. I I recognized you when you started speaking your language. It's good to see you again. I I was going to say, um you know, I think uh I think one of the conversations we're having too, Kendra, is uh and Frankie is there's a conversation to be had about names and place names. And obviously, from the different conversations you're hearing today, um and especially when Jay said it, it it really is a government to government conversation between San Juan County and the um treaty and non-treaty tribes and having that dialogue and how to move forward uh in what's best. And maybe there's some work to be done um with Northwest Straits Commission, with the MRC, and with the federally recognized tribes on on how we move forward on that delicate conversation. And thank you, Christina, for your question on a map. Um that there would not be a map, I don't believe, out there because um a place that Jay calls Flat um Flat Island um is based on where he harvests and what name they use might be different than what another tribe uses or a First Nation. So we want to be delicate about how we do that. And Sam, thank you for the guidance and the advice. Um it's always important to not get in between tribes. Uh local and state government often want to just pick one tribe to be that token tribe to tell the story there. Well, they need to be very respectful of uh the tribes that also interact and go through that place. Um Jay's been a liaison out there for a long time and sharing a rich history on on Lummi's relationship uh to that area, knowing where his names come from, where his own name comes from. Patty, too, has been out there sharing. Stillawamish has been out there. Suquamish, Switemish. Um Sam, you are just a you are a gift to the San Juan Islands, being on Guimas and the work that you share. But um always creating that government to government relationship, whether or not you're San Juan County, whether or not you're CDOC Society, nor um Northwest Straits Commission, Friends of the San Juans. Um always be respectful of that governmental relationship, and there's processes and protocols that each tribe has uh to engage with you. So please always honor the process that they have and Kendra and Frankie, I can provide a list of an updated list of the treaty tribes that are located out in that area. The non-treaty tribes being, you know, Samish, of course, uh their beautiful community. Who the contact information is for the government, their permitting, and their cultural natural resource areas. And Sam, thank you for the suggestion of the archaeological um um office. I think that'd be really important. One of the things Patty and I worked on with the San Juan Monument was noticing that there were over seventy five sacred places that were a quote unquote known of. Uh there needs to be an inventory in the San Juan Islands that needs to be paid for, that works with the tribes in that area, that um identifies sacred places, but remember, sometimes they're so sacred, as as Ray said, that they're held close. So it would never be shared in the public. Um the graveyards that are being dug up out there on the San Juan Islands and some islands that are not being regulated or enforcement is provided. Those are some of the conversations that we'll have tomorrow when we talk about treaty rights. I do want to go into, Jay, you had some question or some answers for some of the other questions. Um did you? Did you remember which ones they were? I have permanent and seasonal villages, if we want to talk about that a little bit. But were the season like, were there seasonal permanent villages in the San Juan Islands is what I think Byron was asking?
I think there's a a thought or a perception that there were no permanent villages. Um but that is not the case. Uh but I I think a a quick answer for one of them, I I mentioned uh uh the the first resolution we pass every year and and reject the money at Stock at One Ten is the court case.
It wasn't the bold decision, Jay?
No, bold decision's different. That's
Seventy one?
Seventy four.
Seventy four?
Seventy eight.
Thank you, Jay. Um Patty, um and and Ray, you might know this one too, Sam. Um there's a question from Jamie. He says crops that were integral, can you describe any crops that were integral part of um the relationship with the land and the way of life? And I know our traditional medicines, um cannabis, uh you know, the cherry bark was used for eczema. Do you guys want to talk about their relationship with the cedar and some of the crops out there? For me, it would be the black and ribbon seaweed that I picked off the beach, but
Did you? Did you say plants?
Plants. The the important plants that were part of our communities.
Wow, it's um it's a it's um so um it went underground lots. The the medicine people were were um targeted by the, particularly the, the Catholics and the agents up here. So the like, like the dances and the traditions in the longhouse, they were, they, it, it went really silent for a long time and I'm, I can speak to this as a pretty strongly because my, uh, my late mother-in-law was a medicine. She did medicines for people. Towards the end of her, she's since passed just a few years ago now, but she was born and raised in the Galiano island, out in the Gulf Islands, raised a big family out there. And, uh, really was a healer. We, you know, we, we're using these terms, right? You know, she's a doctor. She healed, she made people better. Far beyond a doctor, uh, closing a cut or a wound of some kind. She actually, um, healed spirits of people. So towards the end, I'm just going to tell you this little story that towards the end of her time, she, she had, uh, some complications in her, in her age. So we, we took her in here and, um, just to be more comfortable. And for the three or four months she was here, I, I told you, and I told you, you know, Ma, I said, I should, I should put a big, uh, cedar sign out here. Doctor, Dr. Ellen is here. People from far and wide came to get, came here to get her medicines. And from time to time, her and her, she taught one of her, her daughters, she taught all her daughters, but one of her daughters, she taught, uh, as much as she could in the last four, four or five years of her time about, um, medicines, the traditional medicines, plants, all kinds of plants, how to prepare them. You see, we see them every day, but we don't know how to prepare them. So it's, it's really important, Deborah, and, uh, there's lots of, um, lots of plants that are so important to us. I, my, um, thought is of course, it, because it went underground, it's harder to come, bring it back. It's hard for it to come back up into, uh, mainstream. But we're still, we my teachings of my, my mother-in-law are been passed on to the family and they're still using the plants. We're still using the plants. So, anyway.
It's real important.
I think that's important too. Um, when we talk about the medicines, we're talking about the cultural places and the cultural names. These are teachings that are passed on from generation to generation. It's just not something that's, that's given out. There's a careful way of doing that and I think Ray's really sharing that. So, so the question from Jamie, I, I think what you're looking to do is how do we preserve those natural plants and the natural resources and the crops that are such a big part of San Juan Islands ecosystem? And I think, you know, working and continuing that work with Kendra and Frankie, with Tom and with Joe and with yourself and others, you know, how do we start identifying those native plants that are traditionally important? And that might also be, you know, longer term work that we can do Kendra, you know, as we start thinking about, you know, what are, if there are names to be shared, how could we share those names or how do we build a, a tribal advisory group to San Juan County that's consistent of those who call that place home? Table to work with the governments to say, how do we do this? Cause it's a big part of the, the teachings that we could do as the sovereignty curriculum that's intertwined throughout the public school system. So that's something we could think about a project perhaps. And all of you are raising great ideas and questions. Cause as you can see, my little mind shifting and ticking and those of you who know me, right Kai? I'm already starting to plan out the next grant funding cycle, uh, that we can do at, at Washington State, in a capital budget proposal, Kendra. That, that's where I'm thinking. Um, and then I, I wanted to go into another question. You know, we're going to talk about something just a little bit, a tougher conversation. And one of the first words Ray, Ray was looking for is the word sanctuary. Um, there's been conversations happening, um, around San Juan Islands of a sanctuary because it intertwines within, uh, sustaining, protecting the resources of the southern resident killer whale. It talks about the conversations of the shoreline management here, um, that, that we're looking at, uh, protecting. And, you know, a sanctuary is a very big word that's, that's strongly used. The Makon Nation who is actually not Kusailis, they are Nuchalmit. They're Nuchalmit which comes from north, um, of, uh, Kusailish people. Uh, they have a marine sanctuary where the Makon Nation at that time decided to be part of that. But as you talk to them today, it actually, they lost their treaty right as Ray was putting it. You lose that governance control when you join that, that international conversation, international government also doesn't recognize treaties. It is part of the federal government relationship. So, um, we want to talk a little bit now, maybe Patty and Jay and Ray about when we talk about the word sanctuary of putting a protective layer over, over the San Juan Islands to address the impacts there, you know? What does that mean in, in, uh, the role of our Aboriginal rights and our treaty rights? How does that play into our treaty fishermen, um, Jay, as you're fishing out there? If there was to be a sanctuary around the whole entire islands and I'm hoping I'm capturing my question right because it's a delicate conversation. So maybe Patty, um, or JJ, Patty, one of you guys I could start out with?
Well, I can start out simple, just that for, um, Tulela. Um, these are, we're all looking for a way to protect. We're all looking for a way to, to stop what, like, the, um, the past chair of Swinimish, Brian would say a hundred and sixty-some years of a pollution-based economy. How it's impacting us all as Washingtonians, as San Juan Islanders, as tribes. And, um, and First Nations, um, I think for Tulela, when we see that somebody wants to do something like that and the ball is already down the road so far and Tulela says, no, we won't do that and we won't be a party to it and we will fight it. Then who looks bad? The Indians are protesting it. The Indians won't do it. I'm just using that as an example, not that we've done that. But when you want to declare something a sanctuary, it's better, um, especially, how do we figure out how to work together so we get the common outcomes? Because Tulela will never sign on to anything that's going to limit, take away or, um, harm our treaty rights that were preserved for us. And if, I'm just using this as an example. I'm not saying the sanctuary will do this. But if a sanctuary says that you can't fish anymore, you can't tell me I can't fish anymore, even if there's no fish. You can't take away that right that's inherent inside of my people. And so, um, although we would be the first to protect the salmon, but there, we had to be very careful in what we join on to also, um, our legal responsibility is through our, our federal side, our trustee, who's to protect that treaty right with us. And if you go too far down the road and you're engaging with the trustee and nobody's engaged with the tribe, then our, we've been violated. It's a very delicate thing. And so there's many, many causes where everybody wants to do the right thing, but sometimes, um, can harm future generations. And we look seven generations out. Will my grandchildren's 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 grandchildren be able to enjoy the Salish sea the way my people have, how our ancestors intended it? So that's something very, um, for further, um, I think it's a whole topic on itself, on how we can work together because I know, Billy Frank said so many times before he passed away, we're stronger together than we are apart. And if we love a life way, we have to come together and do it together. If there's anything I've learned from the National Monument is that, um, we have to do it together because it's, it wasn't just about, oh, the tribes and the San Juan Islanders. It began, I began to realize it was two different lifeways than what the other outside world in Washington State lives. San Juan Islands is different than Seattle. And, um, we're different. And what are those differences and how do we protect? What you love the most and what we love the most and what we intend to enjoy from here to eternity. And, um, so, um, we're very cautious about things that are being done and how to, how to get them done. And so conversation needs from the get-go to be with tribes, straight up front with the right people. You talk about, uh, food. We have food sovereignty within our tribal whole department. San Juan Islands is a focus of ours simply because many of us remember our grandparents saying, my Indian name, Squatok. She picked my grandma up from Tulela boarding school at the end of the dock in a canoe. She'd take her to Woodby Island and then from there they'd pack up and they'd go to the San Juan Islands to share in the resources that were there that they needed to supply. The supplies to, to dry, to, to fix for winter time in our winter houses. Everything was about what we did under the house during the winter time. And summertime provided, and springtime provided that sustenance for us. And so, um, she said her grandmother Squatok always told her that she loves the camus bulbs. And she said it in our language, um, up in the mountain areas in Arlington in, now we call Arlington and, and up in the Snoqualmie area, but what she loved the most was the camus bulbs from the San Juan Islands because they taste totally different than the land, the camus bulbs from the islands. And so that's how they saw food resources also. A good example is from my dad's side of the family, um, Nancy Boomhouse. Her family loved the mud ducks. But the people down at the other, at Tulela Bay didn't like the mud ducks because they to- tasted totally different than the ducks that were down, um, down on the, the saltwater. And so there were, there were many reasons. And then there were spiritual reasons why they did those too. And why they ate them at certain times and what they did with the whole duck. And so, um, I think a great, a great subject further down is how do we work at restoring some places? And I know Tulela is working with some groups to, um, some people on the San Juan Islands to have that conversation on how can we restore some of these fields that used to be farmland and now you want some natural vegetation there. So, yeah, it's, uh, those are big topics to Deb that are a further hole, half hour or whole three hours. Thank you.
You're welcome, Patty, Jay.
Sorry, what was the question, Deb?
Um, we were looking at the, the intricate part of how we're intertwining, um, the sa- the conversation of sanctuaries, uh, into, uh, the, the governmental decisions that the San Juan County is being, exploring. And I think it's been a conversation that, uh, Ray and Patty and you and I have, have been part of for the past, uh, you know, five to, to eight years that we've all worked together.
Yeah. No, it's, it's the same as, as Patty mentioned and as you mentioned and, um, it, it's, uh, i- if it eliminates our ability to exercise our treaty right to fish, one of the reserved inherent rights. The, the few things we got out of seeding our territory and our lands and islands, it's, it's not going to happen because through, like, was discussed earlier, um, through, through the permitting processes and policies of the past. Whether it's ferries, which we know are necessary, whether it's mooring buoys, whether it's docks, whether it's private docks. You, you add that up and, and Ray Harris mentioned accumulative impacts. And, and you sit with the Army Corps and you have their mathematicians do an exact number on what the, the number percentage of treaty, um, areas have been eliminated through these little things like mooring buoys and docks. It's, the number's astronomical and, um, we can't keep going backwards and sacrificing more and more and more. Um, when the ultimate sacrifice was made a hundred and sixty-five years ago. And, and that's, that's why I mentioned empathy. Um, it's not to kill things. It's not to stop things. It's please have, how do we gain, view each other as partners and friends and establish a relationship and have empathy for one another or the sacrifices of the past and what we continue to do today um, through policy that eliminates. And then, um, you asked about some plants, stinger nettles. Stinger nettle soup, uh, we use stinger nettles to build our nets. Dandelion salad with the sockeye is good even today. Camus, of course. I work with some, uh, great folks out on Orcas Island and San Juan Island, but primarily Orcas right now on a, a camus field. Bringing back the, the indigenous plants and, and what was utilized. And I see Alexis there, Alexis. I'm always grateful for your leadership and willingness to, um, I didn't see you until just a few minutes ago, but, uh, uh, while I was serving the nation, always great to work with you and thank you for always being at the table.
So one of the, one of the other conversations too that, um, I'm seeing in the chat box is, you know, there are, um, there's a, there's an increase of infrastructure development with shoreline management that happens. And that is my goodness, uh, in the San Juan Islands, you cannot say shoreline, you cannot say San Juan Islands or island living without talking about shoreline management. Um, I think the, one of the conversations we're having, if I see here from, um, from, let me see. How to heighten the awareness? Nope, let me look again. A shoreline ma- how do we heighten the awareness of shoreline management, um, for the county? And how do we, how do we look to enhance that? And maybe for us, I think, um, oftentimes we're seeing in, in a municipal government, when we have shoreline management, we have very, very well-off, um, folks who will take on shoreline management and do hard armoring out here and pay the fine uh, rather than managing that. You know, it's, it's a conversation to be had. Um, also, you know, all of you are aware of what's happening around you in your community. You're aware of, uh, the fact that the San Juan Islands also has some of the most wealthiest places out there where people can just pay the fine. We have the same issue happening in Woodby Island. Uh, Patty, we, we have the same issue happening down in Tulela, Jay, uh, over in Lummy and on Lummy Island. Um, continuing to be aware and create your relationship, uh, with the tribes and continuing to find supportive how to do that. I think, uh, one of the conversations I heard that that was most radical, uh, Jay came from GI James from Lummy Nation. When he said, we'll just put a moratorium and say no more building and no more infrastructure. Cause how many times do we have to say no? Uh, it's, it's, it's a tough conversation to be had, uh, for local government and state government. But, uh, GIs ask for that, um, uh, is it so new? So Patty, did you want to talk about how you work with local government on shoreline and development, uh, in, in the area that you, you engage in?
Y- yeah, I, um, I'm just a brutally honest person, sorry. It's been, I've been kicking at the darkness for a long time with my county, in particular Snohomish County. And I have to say, they are probably the most difficult county to work with only because, um, it's taken them a long time to even acknowledge that Tulela was sovereign. And that Tulela had rights and they didn't have to answer to anything to Tulela except for if they needed, um, sometimes political money to get voted in. When we finally got a seat at the table is when we had money. And, um, but that was our early beginnings. Now we, we are at the table with them as an example. And we have, it took about ten years of talking back and forth about what it meant when they issued a shoreline permit for hard armoring. Let's pretend at Mission Beach, our prime pristine fishing areas. And, um, what did that mean to us? And, um, finally we created a relate, a rela- relationship through an MOU. Not an MOA, an MOU that we will work in tandem together so that we can comment on those and say when it impacts our treaty rights or our lifeways. And early back then, uh, we began to see the steep decline in salmon. And it's specifically in that area. And it's specifically in that area. And that's because of how the hard armoring and and the point that it is and everything is now our bay at Toledo Bay is all because it swoops around there is almost closed off and we're going to have, we're working through the Army Corps, it have to dredge it. Whatever anyway, so I've I've learned from those ten years of leading that team up. That more than convincing them that I'm just being honest, it was educating them that we're here because so many people don't know there are Indians in Snohomish County. And so many people don't understand what a treaty is. If you understand what a treaty is, why it was signed. And what happened and what was guaranteed to specifically us in the Northwest here. Then it creates a different relationship if you have ears to hear and open to them. And at the end of the day, I always say you can either let's sit and talk and work together. And I said this just at the Marine Resource Committee the other day. Or at the end of the day, we can fight each other in a court of law, who wins really? Because I'm a Washington State citizen. And I pay taxes. So all that money is going to what? If we could find a way to communicate and work at and I really believe that every county, including San Juan's. I I hear the shoreline issues and probably I'm assuming you send notifications to Toledo that, you know. I'm just going to make up that Patty's moving there and she's got billions of dollars and she's going to put up this rock wall, this cement wall and all this stuff and a big mansion right on the shoreline there. Do you have any problem with this? We've convinced Snohomish County to do that now and they do send us those notices prior to this meeting. I was furious because I was reading about all the bulkheads that had been illegally put in. On Toledo shorelines just recently. Because with COVID, people don't have many staff, we are hard pressed right now with keeping staff on because we're on a furlough, much less we're searching still for a relative in the Salish Sea that is was our Fish and Wildlife guy that checked on these hard armorings. A relation of mine, we're still searching for him, he's still gone. At any rate, if I could ask anything of San Juan Islands, communicate every time. There is a shoreline permit with every tribe that has treaty rights in there. Or that has cultural rights to say, do you have a concern with this? And it calls for you really looking at your zoning codes, your comp plan. And to say, because I know what's coming and hitting the San Juan Islands, it's it is the the big money that's coming in now with COVID. I know that's been an impact. And with the national monument. Looking at your comp plan and your your zoning codes. And we tried to convince Snohomish County to at least in their storyline, the executive summary to state state right up front. That there are three tribes in in the comp plan for Snohomish County and tell the story. So that anybody looking up on the internet, they want to move to Snohomish County, they know there are tribes here at least. But they wouldn't pass that they wouldn't do it, it's still not in their comp plan. They refuse to acknowledge that there was the Toledo tribes, the Stilla Guamish and and whom I forgetting Sam? There's one more, a Sockswaddle. And so that's that's really sad to me, but we've come a long ways even since then. Our relationship is getting a little better after that terrible thing, the tax case went down. And for us, it was exerting our sovereign right. But what I'm trying to say is it's better to work together than to not and sometimes it's just we've arrived at a good time. Where you you need us and we need you. If we're going to preserve anything. And 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 just one more thing back to in your planning department, having the, is it archaeologist on board? Nothing's more critical for the San Juan Islands because every grain of sand, every island, even if it's just a rock. Has the footprints of our ancestors. There are burial grounds all throughout the San Juans. And if 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 a national monument is placed and the parks that are existing there, when we began only not even a third, and I know Marsh is on there. Were are surveyed for archaeological areas. Well, now with the San Juan Island Monument is doing a survey of all the islands for village sites, graveyards. Anything that that is there that's reflective of our people. And so I think it's it's really important to have that position there and it can help strengthen what you want to have also to protect against the big bucks that are going to be coming to buy your whole island. Thank you.
No, that's helpful Patty, I'm going to have Sam, he want, he's going to share a little bit more about sanctuaries and plants and then I'm going to wrap up today and give a little bit of a heads up for tomorrow. Sam.
Yeah, thanks Deborah, I'm just a quick correction to something that was said earlier, Samish is actually a treaty tribe. The federal government granted Samish a Cartier decision, which is a retroactive recognition that we were treaty signatories. We don't have fishing rights, but we are a treaty tribe. But um about sanctuaries, like there's another effort that I've heard about in the San Juan Islands about the community rights of nature. And that's one that I'm kind of excited about because I've seen other indigenous tribes across the world. Use that to create things like sanctuaries, but they still have tribes really at the ground table of being able to be part of the decisions and I think that's really, really important because even when we're talking about endangered plants or animals. You know, tribes have you know, thousands and thousands of year relationship with every single plant and animal on this territory. And if you take tribes out of that equation, that's not necessarily going to help that plant or animal. You know, it's something that I think about whenever we harvest and cook camus or you know, endangered plants, you know, I've had people come up to us and tell us that, you know, maybe we shouldn't be eating it if it's endangered, but there's a spiritual aspect of taking care of, you know, our relatives, our plant relatives and our fish relatives. And part of that spiritual relationship is is harvesting it and showing that plant how much we appreciate it and so I think that even when we talk about saving these endangered things, you know, native peoples need to keep that spiritual relationship. As part of continuing the insured survival, you know, it's a mutually insured survival when indigenous peoples are still harvesting. And you know, about protecting shorelines and stuff. You know, like Patty said, our ancestors have been everywhere. Human remains and stuff, you know, bones only survive for about a hundred to two hundred years in the environment, the soil so acidic in the San Juan Islands that if there were burials somewhere, they're kind of just dissolve into the soil in about two hundred years. And so, you know, even if you dig somewhere, there's no guarantee that there wasn't an ancestor that was buried there because the bones could have just disintegrated and became part of that soil and so we were really, really active along the shoreline and so it's a really sensitive area and there's no way of knowing whether or not you're in an archaeological site. Myself, I grew up on Lopez Island and my dad was actually a concrete mason and so I've been on a lot of construction sites out there in the islands growing up and you know, there's a lot of good, good people in that industry, the construction industry in the islands, but you know, that's their living. I've heard stories of excavation crews, you know, digging in to shell midden and unearthing human remains and they just kept going, you know, because it's a multimillion dollar mansion that they're building. And if they slow down the progress, the developer might just find a different company that'll do the work and will ignore the human remains that they just found. And so I know that that happens, you know, I won't name any names, but I know that it happens and you know, so I think that other things that could be looked into out there is having, you know, trainings for excavation companies that are out there. Because it's a really, really big problem and so just wanted to throw that out there too.
Sam, I think that's a really great idea on the training for our Builders Association, Jay.
Oh yeah, just really quick Deb, I think Sam, thank you for sharing that and and all the other that others who have shared, but one thing we cannot overlook and and we talk about the spirit of rocks. And we talk about the spirit of land and trees and someone asked about cedars and what is the significance? You know, one of the last walks I took on the village where I come from on Orcas. And and my great grandfather was raised and our long lines of family come from there. We we were walking through some some gigantic cedars and he brought the whole crew there and he said look and and he said that's a culturally modified tree, but over over a hundred or two hundred years. It grows back and the way we had har harvest cedar bark and different things to make our hats and and other things. They grow back together. But so cedar is still today, very, very, very important. For us back pre-contact, those were our horses, those were our cars. You look at old farmer in charge reports on, I'll just speak for myself, the Lummies. They are the cockiest of tribes, they are the most self-sufficient. They have become great farmers, but we can't keep them on their damn farms because we can't keep them out of their canoes. And they keep going back to their villages, you know, this is Finkbonner, this is my great, 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 great grandfather, who was a farmer in charge from Boston named Frederick Lane, who's buried on Lummy Island. You know, these, that's who we are, but what's important with what Sam said is what what we believe today as sacred sites like Arlington and Gettysburg and the cemetery on San Juan or or in Ferndale or Bellingham or Snohomish or Toledo with crosses and headstones, that wasn't our way. And if you really look back on the Cherry Point Fight to protect a sacred site or Madrona Point. In the eighties when Auntie Dora Lee went out there with her with her special strength that she carries as a as a leader within our community with special gifts. It's not just in the ground, that that wasn't necessarily our primary ways of burial. In early contact, whacking down and scalping the mountains and scalping the islands of their cedars and their trees. That held our family members, we buried ourselves in trees and canoes and but often we would be buried in our canoes in the Salish Sea. So my point is the Salish Sea is not just a place for resources. All of the Salish Sea is is to us sacred water, even though the Jordan flows into the Dead Sea, it doesn't eliminate Christians faith and belief in the sacredness of the Jordan River where Jesus Christ was baptized by John and that's the same for us with the Salish Sea. And to create that empathy is really tough today in this world. But the Salish Sea holds my family, my ancestors, not just the sand on the the shorelines of the beach, but we buried, we are, we exist, we are one with the Salish Sea. The the little bays out there, Garrison Bay Alexis, when I spent time with you there. The TCP at Cherry Point shows our longhouse there. And and some of the originals who got here in eighteen, you know, the the Hudson Bay and then eighteen fifty five treaty and then post. They talk about this five hundred to eight hundred foot longhouse along with smaller longhouses. Patty Gobin, your grandmother's home on Woodby Island. And not just one longhouse, but the multiple in the camus up there on Woodby Island with the Skajits. And the Skajits there were one and the same as the Upper Skajits and you know, the history is deep and it's rich, but it's still here and it's important and the Salish Sea is more than a giver of life for just salmon and and food. When Sam talks about the spiritual side of eating camus, Doritos and 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 farm-raised cows and farm-raised salmon, that's not normal to us, even still today, it's not and and it's harmful, that's why we have the highest diabetes in this entire country. This is all new. Clean water was normal, Roach Harbor Stream was rich to us, Orcas Island. The the lake there and and the water from Mount Constitution fed our village where there was fresh water. So I think that's important, the water, the water has a spirit, but it's also a sacred body that holds our ancestors. Just as much a as the land burials do. So you know, a lot, a lot of battlegrounds are out there, you know, that was frontline for a brutal history that's written in the treaty that we will no longer war with tribes. There's a reason for that and the San Juan Islands were frontline for the northerners who came down and you know, that's a whole nother topic, but a lot of the burials in ground are from different massacres and and battles and wars and it's all sacred ground, sacred waters, but just wanted to share that, I thought that was important as well.
Thank you Jay, you know, we're we're coming to our close of our time together on the beach and I want to give a closing closing remarks to Ray, he has a a conversation that he wants to add. Kendra and Frankie and I will touch base because I think there's some action items that came out of here. One of them coming from Councilwoman Wolf is developing and really looking at a consultation process with the tribes. And then looking at how we incorporate that as a as maybe a standing policy through comp plans. So I don't want to forget that and then Kendra, I don't want to forget the conversation of how do you incorporate traditional knowledge into ecological restoration? The conversation Jamie brought to plants and to native plants and to native resources. I might think that plays into that and how do we manage that? And then the sacred place inventory that came up underneath the San Juan Islands needs to be talked about a little bit with Patty, so a couple of action items we'll put in the bike rack. Those of you who bike would enjoy that, that bike rack or and I say I throw it up on the beach. So Ray, I'm going to have you share closing remarks and then I'll do a little bit of housekeeping at the end.
Thank you, it's just wonderful to hear all of you and in a way triggers my thoughts. Stirves up the old stories that I've heard, this is what I've heard, this is what I've used, this is what have been told to me. And the cedar story I'm going to tell you is one story of cedar. In this day and age of technology and Zoom and Facebook and all that kind of stuff. Might be nice to see, hear a story of what we've used to our children. But anyway, I have a short story on cedar. Times when when times were rough for our people in the beginning of time. Creation was happening. Learning our way in this land in this world. There was a smart person, smart man. Every time something came up. He was there to help. When a family wanted to build a dwelling. Get some comfort of from the elements, he would be there helping build a some kind of some kind of safe place for the family. When they, when the mother wanted to clothe their kids, her children in comfort and warmth. He was there to help. Show and produce the clothing for young people, children. When the when the men wanted to go hunting and fishing. Enjoy the shores of the Salish Sea. He was there to help. Find a way to get around in the Salish Sea. Up in the rivers. When there was a healer. Medicine man. Looking after people that were in ailing ways. He found a way to help with that. To help the healer, the medicine man. To help the healer, the medicine man, Schnamm. He found a way. He was so busy, this guy. That all of a sudden, time went by so fast. In this time of fixing up our lives and our way of life. Before you know it, he was an old man. The helpfulest old man around that time. Just then, Halz came back. He was searching around, he was looking around, what happened, what, what? I want to see what happened. See what's going on in all this creation with, where we brought things to Creator. Halz was the Creator. And he came upon a, a village where they're having a council. The council was worried. The discussion was, how were we gonna, everybody has a family now. All our people have families and they're having a lineage of, uh, communities and villages, happy, content, well-fed, able to move around. And it all came from the help of this one man. But he was so helpful and so busy, he never built a, he never put his family together. So the Creator was listening to this discussion. And he joined the council. The old man was on his, on his deathbed. He was going to take his last breath. Creator said to him, he said, we're going to take you up to this hill, just by the village. And we'll lay you to rest. Tom stomped it. We're going to carry you up there for your rest time. But we'll see you again. So the people brought him on his last days and they laid him to rest. And the summatories are, the, uh, crevices were sacred places. Nobody went back to see it. One day, uh, men were out walking and they came upon a, this place. And here stood it. Bay. But Bay came, showed up that day. And even to this day, and for all our life. Cedar has been more important, a very important thing. Whatever we needed. House. Canoes, clothing. Bowels for healing. Bay was there. So the council got together to discuss this, what, what we're going to call him. What we're going to call this tree. And the Creator came in and he said, what was the name of the man that helped, was so helpful? His name was Bay. So from now on, we will call this tree Bay. Do this day when you, when you look around and you, you, you very seldom see, see them in a forest-like setting. Where there could be all fir trees or could be all hemlock trees. The cedar trees tend to be individuals here and there. Once in a while you get a cluster, but not very often. And, uh, and that's the story I have about Bay. He's been helpful all his life. He's been there for us all his life. And it was not an accident that we have such a beautiful tree today. That is what we relied on forever. Harchka.
Thank you Ray. So thank you so much for that, uh, the rich history. Uh, thank you, uh, Jay and Patty for joining us. These are my mentors, these are my teachers, these are the ones who built me. Uh, these are the ones who welcomed me into their territories and allowed me to walk on their shorelines. Um, they too love each and every one of you. Uh, we value your input, we value your insight. Uh, and every one of you, take care, uh, the past and the future of the Coast Salish people, um, from your homes. Uh, we have a huge opportunity here with two more days of sitting on my, on Jay's beach, Patty's beach and Ray's beach out front. Um, and, and working through a couple more of these conversations that we're having today. I see Eric sent a message and we'll keep track and take a look at that for tomorrow. Um, I'm going to turn it to Frankie to talk about our schedule tomorrow. I know there is a little mix-up in Eventbrite. Welcome to the world of Zoom. Um, we all would have showed up at seven o'clock in the morning if we were all face to face. Uh, Frankie's going to walk through the schedule for tomorrow and then we're going to end our meeting for today. Um, much love to you Ray and Patty and Jay. I appreciate you guys and thank you for joining us today.
Thank you Patty.
So Frankie, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, well, thank you so much, um, Deborah, Patty, Ray and Jay and Sam. Just, um, such a rich, um, such rich knowledge that you've shared with us today and great insights. And I think there's, um, a lot that we can all, um, go forward with, um, from today into tomorrow. Um, we're meeting again tomorrow at one o'clock, um, for another two and a half hour session. Focusing on science and policy of the Salish Sea. Um, and we're fortunate to have Patty with us again. Um, I always value Patty's, um, insights and knowledge and guidance so much. Um, in my work, both with the MRC and the county and in, um, my personal, um, science endeavors here also. Um, also Joe Gados, um, another Salish Sea hero of mine. Will be here to talk about sort of the science side from the health of the Salish and the San Juan Islands. And, uh, Tim Brewer will be joining us to talk about treaty rights as well. Um, so please make sure you come back and join us again tomorrow. Um, to continue these really important conversations. And thank you so much for everyone, um, for being here today.
Thanks everybody. Have a good day.